Council meeting, Dunwoody City Council meeting to order on September 27th at 6 o'clock. Unless there's objections, seeing no objections, this meeting is called to order. Councilman Hinnigan, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please?
My pleasure. Please stand if you're able. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, public comments. Laura Tikin, yes, thank you. You have three minutes. Can you, don't start the time yet. Can you move the microphone down a little bit and close to your mouth? It's just hard to hear. Thank you. Yes. Oh, maybe it's not a one.
Press to turn on. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I am Laura Tikinski. I'm here to comment on the tree removal on the Winters Chapel Path Phase One project, also known as Winters Chapel Trails 16-piece site clearing and its potential impact on my property, which is adjacent to this site. Specifically, I have five mature trees along the back of my fence, which are within a few feet of the two trees marked for removal. My concern is that the removal of these trees that are in the right of way will damage the root system of my trees. To address this concern, I engaged Arbor Guard tree specialists to assess the potential impact. The assessment was conducted by Jamie Blackburn, ISA certified arborist, on September 23rd. The following is a direct quote from Mr. Blackburn's report, which I have already shared with the Department of Public Works. Tree removal for the city of Dunwoody/Georgia Power Project along Marston Road should be conducted with as little disturbance to the existing grade as possible, including from soil cut, soil fill, and soil compaction. Above-ground portions of the trees should be carefully removed so as not to damage branches of existing boundary trees. Below-ground portions of the trees should be ground with a stump grinder, not ripped out with an excavator or bulldozer. This will ensure that the existing grade of the slope is maintained and that healthy roots of the five boundary trees are not adversely affected. He goes on to say, given the size of the trees and the distance from the homeowners association fence, it is not predicted that any construction activities will affect the structural root plates of the trees as long as the grade near the homeowners association fence is unchanged. If any structural root plates are impacted, the trees would be at risk of structural failure and would need to be removed at the project's expense. I am here to ask for written assurance that Mr. Blackburn's recommendations on both the tree removal and slope maintenance will be guaranteed and that also similar methods would be employed in the entire project area and not just in the section adjacent to my property so that it minimizes the risk to the existing trees on the individual homeowners' properties while the trees are being removed for the Winters Chapel tree removal project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Webb.
Good evening. Din Webb, 1230 Peachtree Road. Oops, sorry, we have a new address now. 1105 West Peachtree Street, Atlanta 30309, here on behalf of Peachtree Shops at Dunwoody LLC and Sodop 2 LLC. I'm speaking in support of items seven and eight. We've gone back and forth for about two weeks or since we were last here on a set of conditions and we sent a revised set to staff at 2:51 PM, which I have a copy with me. We understand those are going to be advanced tonight. We are in agreement with them. I think we're ready to move this thing forward and hope it has your support this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob Facella.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bob Facella, 4894 Summerford Drive. I'm the president of the Dunwoody Homeowners Association. And as Mr. Webb mentioned, items seven and eight tonight, the two parcels of land in Dunwoody Village that back up to the branches homeowners. While the homeowners hate to lose that 150-foot buffer, undisturbed buffer they've enjoyed for over 40 years, at the end of the day, they do understand that they do not own the property in question. And unfortunately, at this point in time, we have exhausted our legal means. With that said, they are pleased, albeit not completely satisfied, that the city and the commercial property owner went back to the drawing board and the commercial property owner stepped up and made concessions to ease some of the homeowner's concerns and at the end of the day, vetting the situation. So we thank councilors Harris and Lambert and Bastian for their help. Bruce appreciated as well. And Mr. Webb, despite the comments of one gentleman a couple of weeks ago, you're an honorable attorney. Thank you.
So that concludes public comment. We will have an additional session at the end of the meeting if anyone is still here. Is someone introducing our speaker? Am I?
The next slide, the reports and presentations is Marlo Clowers from Georgia DOT on the Transform 285-400 project update. Ginger is, there she is. She's right there, ready to present.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you. Good afternoon, mayor and council. I apologize, I was a little late. I actually am just running in from a meeting with the commissioner. He wanted to make sure all the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed about one of the items that I'm gonna discuss this during this presentation. So, let's see, I will start by sharing my screen. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes, ma'am, we can see your screen.
All right, thank you. And, let's see, well, again, thank you. I'm Marlo Clowers of Georgia DOT, the project manager, principal in charge for the Transform 285-400 project. I'll start with just an overview of what the project is. I'm gonna try to move through quickly because I want to be respectful for your time. So just a reminder of the project scope, highlight some of the recent openings and then spend most of the time talking about some of the upcoming traffic changes that we plan to implement very soon and provide you some information on how to stay informed on the project. So this is a sketch of the project limits. The project is more than just the interchange. A lot of times you hear it called 285-400 interchange, but it's more than that. It is rebuilding the core of the interchange, building new flyover ramps, new bridges, but it is also building collector-distributor lanes, additional auxiliary lanes and ramps along 285 in both directions, collector-distributor lanes along 400 northbound and southbound from Glen Ridge Drive to Pitts Road and the limits along 285 or Long Island Drive to just east of Ashford Dunwoody Road. The project also includes replacing the I-285 bridge decks over Long Island and Lake Forest as well as bridge replacements, full bridge replacements for the 285 bridges over Glen Ridge Drive, 400 and Peachtree Dunwoody Road. And we're gonna talk a lot more about that later in the presentation. So here are some pictures of where we started and where we're going. So on the left, you'll see the before picture before any work began. And on the right, you see a rendering of what we're actually building and gives you an idea of the massive scope of the project, which includes 34 bridges and over 150 walls. So it is a massive undertaking. So we have had a lot, we had a very busy summer construction season and had a lot of new ramps open. One of which I wanted to highlight is the 400 southbound to 285 westbound. The second phase of that ramp opened July 31st. And drivers will enter that ramp just using the right lane just before Hammond Drive. And then it accesses Roswell Road and also allows access to 285 eastbound. Sorry. Okay. We also opened another phase of the I-285 westbound exit ramp to Roswell Road so that the ramp that I just mentioned previously ties in here and then this is where you access Roswell Road. So this basically is in a very similar footprint as the previous ramp. However, it shifted traffic to the north side of the ramp as opposed to the south side of the ramp so that the work on the southern portion of the ramp that accesses Roswell Road can be completed. You still have two lanes and one lane to allow you to go north on Roswell Road and one lane to allow you to go south. On August 1st, we opened the westbound collector-distributor lane. And that, we, you know, I think it has helped traffic flow westbound a lot. You access from that, from one exit point on 285 westbound, you access both 400 southbound and Roswell Road. And then you also are allowed the opportunity to go back to 285 westbound. So you can see that westbound collector-distributor here in the background. And you can see, it's kind of, it's light, so it's a little difficult to see. But here is where one of the movements I mentioned earlier ties to the new westbound CD lane and then off the page is where it ties to Roswell Road that we just looked at previously. So that opened on August 1st. We also opened a new access point to the exit ramp to Glen Ridge Drive from 285 eastbound. So here's that, that new Glen Ridge ramp, which opened previously earlier this summer. But the exit point from 285 in August, we shifted further to the west that allowed better access to the ramp and also it helped with getting a little more length on the ramp so that there's plenty of storage on this ramp for all traffic that's accessing Glen Ridge Drive. So we also opened on August 29th the 285 eastbound ramp to 400 northbound and southbound. And you can see that ramp here on the bottom of the photo that I'm highlighting. This ramp is accessed in one location and then it divides to go northbound and southbound on 400. And there's been a lot of improvement in that area since that new ramp opened. Also, last weekend, last Saturday, we opened the new ramp from 285 eastbound to Ashford Dunwoody Road. We had previously been calling it the eastbound CD lane, but because it doesn't allow that through access to 285 eastbound, similar to the westbound, the westbound actually does allow that through access. So it is a true CD. The eastbound doesn't have the through access. So it's actually an extended ramp to Ashford Dunwoody Road. So once you, if you're eastbound on 285, once you pass Glen Ridge Drive, you merge onto that ramp. It is a one-lane ramp, it's a very long ramp, and it takes you all the way to Ashford Dunwoody Road. You cannot go past, you can't, again, go past Ashford Dunwoody Road and back to 285. You have to exit at 285, but you can, you're still allowed to access Lake Huron from the slip ramp from the eastbound exit ramp. And then you can go both directions on Ashford Dunwoody from that ramp. So I think drivers are still getting used to it. They're, you know, it's getting some good use, but we know the volumes will pick up with traffic using that ramp. So the biggest thing, the thing that I was just meeting with the commissioner about to make sure that everything that needed to be considered had been considered was the lane reduction that we're about to implement on 285 in order to close the two inside lanes in both directions to begin the bridge replacements over Glen Ridge Drive, 400, and Peachtree Dunwoody Road. So the first phase in the westbound direction is scheduled to be implemented next weekend. So we, I'm sorry if my slides haven't been updated, but it, these dates have changed. So the westbound direction is scheduled for implementation this weekend, which is October 2nd. And the eastbound direction is scheduled for implementation the following weekend, which would be the October 9th. So the purpose of this first phase is to shift traffic to the outer lanes so that the two remaining lanes or on the bridges can be demolished and rebuilt. This first phase is currently planned to be in place through the end of the year where at that time, we will go into Phase Two. So during Phase Two, traffic will be put on the new lanes that were constructed in Phase One and the outer lanes will be, over the bridges will be removed, will be blocked, will be closed so that those bridges can be demolished and rebuilt. So it's just switching traffic onto the new portions and building the next portion. And that work is currently scheduled to be complete in the second quarter of 2022. So the point I want to make about both of these phases of work is to replace these bridges, the existing bridges, which were just about at their useful life, to replace those bridges and rebuild new bridges that will have, that'll be newer and have larger footprints for the roadways that are passing underneath. So we do expect during this time that there is going to be some significant impacts to the traffic traveling through the corridor. We're advising drivers to expect delays, that there will be longer travel times through the area to plan your trip because there's also a higher potential for increases in crashes through the corridor while this is in place. So one thing I did also want to point out about the new access points once the project, well, they're in place now and they will remain until when the project is complete. One of them is along 285 westbound. So as you're probably aware already, after we opened the westbound CD lane, there's no access from Glen Ridge Drive to Roswell Road westbound. And that will remain in the permanent configuration. On 285 eastbound, now that we have opened the ramp to Ashford Dunwoody, there is no through access. And I've mentioned this earlier, no through, no through access to 285. And there will also be, there is also no access from Peachtree Dunwoody Road to Ashford Dunwoody. So those changes went into effect last weekend and that will remain when the project is complete. So no through access from the new ramp to Ashford Dunwoody, no access between Peachtree Dunwoody and Ashford Dunwoody. So because of all the delay and impact that we are anticipating for these bridge replacements, we are well in coordination with the Wayfinding apps with Google, with Waze. We also are utilizing all of our dynamic message signs that the Transportation Management Center manages and we're putting up messages to advise of the new traffic patterns. We also are putting, we also, of course, 511 has real-time information on the lane reductions and whatever the conditions are traveling through the corridor. So again, plan your trip, leave early, expect delays, follow the signage. There's signage, both ground-mounted signs as well as pavement markings that can direct you through the construction zone. And then use your preferred Wayfinding app, Google, Waze, whichever you prefer because we're in coordination with them and they can also direct you through the corridor. Another item that I did want to mention is a local street traffic pattern change that we plan to implement at the same time as the lane reduction for the bridge replacements on 285. So this is to increase the area for working so there'll be workroom from above on 285 because of the lane reductions and then more workroom below because of the planned traffic pattern change. And starting with Peachtree Dunwoody, the plan is to direct traffic southbound, which will allow access to remain to the hospitals and to close the northbound lane on Peachtree Dunwoody just underneath 285, basically between the ramps to help facilitate that bridge construction. So north of 285, you'll still have both directions on Peachtree Dunwoody that are available. South of 285, you will still have both directions. But you, but northbound, you will have to either turn down Lake Huron and use Lake Huron to access points north. You can take Perimeter Center Parkway back to Hammond, back to Peachtree Dunwoody for, through access on, northbound through access on Peachtree Dunwoody Road. Or you can get on 285. But we would be closing the lane, the northbound lane on Peachtree Dunwoody. The mirror would be the same on Glen Ridge. So north of 285, you still have your northbound and southbound lanes. The southbound lane would have to turn onto 285 eastbound because there would be no through access for southbound. However, you still will have the northbound access on Glen Ridge. And then south of 285, you'll still have northbound and southbound directions open. You still will have the ramp from 285 open. And this will allow free-flow access to the hospitals. The hospitals were very important to us when we were, as we're looking at this plan. So you have that, what I call the southern route from Glen Ridge to the hospital complex. And then you also have the northern route, that's my term, from Peachtree Dunwoody. So right now, at the earliest, we expect that this would be in place mid-October after both lane reductions, the lane reductions are in place, both eastbound and westbound, and at least six weeks, but likely longer through both Phases One and Two of the bridge construction. So we have lots of avenues to stay informed on the project. We have a webpage that includes a lot of historical information. It has maps, has newsletters that you can see, the environmental document. We have drawings. Lots of things are there. And we also have a, an email address that you can send emails to get information on the project. We have a hotline that's manned. Again, the web address and the social media hashtag that you can use to access the different social media outlets for information on the project. And you can always contact me also if you have any comments or questions about what's going on or the status of the project. So with that, that ends my presentation. And if there's any time, then I will answer any questions you have.
There, there is absolutely time and we thank you very much. Does, John, you want to start at your end?
Thank you, Marlo, for the presentation. I think the collector-distributor for Roswell Road, the long ramp up for that exit surprised some people. And when I looked at your presentation, I saw that we, the bridges or the connection to Ashford Dunwoody, Ashford Dunwoody is in this project. And I see now the long eastbound connection to Ashford Dunwoody. My main concern is westbound Ashford Dunwoody. And I haven't seen it as part of this project and I want to make sure that I understand what's happening with that. Westbound to Ashford Dunwoody. The connection between Shambly Dunwoody Road and Ashford Dunwoody Road is a main thoroughfare. Let me repeat, a very main thoroughfare for our community. We have very limited east-west connector streets. When is there going to be any collector-distributor lanes going westbound to Ashford Dunwoody? Is it in this project? And explain to me how and what's happening with the connection from Shambly Dunwoody Road to Ashford Dunwoody Road.
I wish I had a drawing with me because that would help, it would visualize it better. But the actual westbound CD lane at the end of the project will start east of Ashford Dunwoody. So if you're westbound, there will be a point where you will have an access point to the collector-distributor. And from there, you will also, you will have an improved exit to Ashford Dunwoody in the westbound direction. So we're, go ahead.
It's really, it's the connection between Shambly Dunwoody. It's four blocks.
Right, so, can I ask a question? I think that's in the next project. I think the connector lane, is that correct, Marlo? From the Shambly Dunwoody Road to Ashford Dunwoody is actually
That's correct.
Tim Matthews project, which is not the managed lanes. It's in the managed lanes project and that's our next meeting, I think.
I just, I want to make sure that that connection is
We've been working, yeah.
Is still there.
Yeah.
All right, and then I saw that the bridges going over, the new bridges, are their design, I guess you've been in connection with the Perimeter Improvement District in Sandy Springs as far as how those bridges are going to look? We've had meetings and discussions over that for uniformity's sake or the differences. Are there designs that have been already chosen for those bridges?
The bridges will be concrete bridges. The, we have had a lot of coordination with PCIDs and, you know, the other local stakeholders. And when the contract was being written, we actually had specifications for what the the walls of the bridges that face traffic would look like. So if you're driving, let's just say on Peachtree Dunwoody now, headed towards 285, a lot of the CD lane bridges that are built, you can see the traffic side has the, more of the Texas Rail looking parapet on it. So the bridge, the rails will have some aesthetic components. So, but all the bridges will be the same structurally. There'll be concrete bridges that have the amenities that are in the contract for all the bridges on the project that face local traffic.
Right, thank you. And again, I know the next project will be Shambly Dunwoody Bridges and things of that nature. We've had discussions regarding that, but that's a different project. Finally, let's discuss Waze. We, my community directly abuts 285. And when traffic backs up on 285, somehow the Waze apps starts putting the traffic directly on my side streets. And when traffic backs up on 285, somehow the Waze apps starts putting the traffic directly on my side streets. GDOT is working with Waze and how are you going to make sure that the 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 stream of 285 doesn't go down Stonington Road? A small cul, small road through my neighborhood.
Well, we are providing the traffic impacts, the lane closures, the traffic pattern changes to Waze. We do not typically prescribe to them how, what routes they should say that people take or avoid. We're leaving that to their algorithms to set those things.
We'll have to play with their algorithms and play in that realm. Is that, is there a way to do that?
That's a question I can take back to our communications group, but I don't think so. I believe the algorithms are set by the wayfinding app and we allow them, you know, to use their tool in the best way that they've developed it to, developed it to inform the public.
All right, thank you, Marla. I I I appreciate you coming today for the information. I really do, so thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Jim.
Hey, Marla, Joe, Joe here. Thanks again for the presentation. I'm anxiously waiting for the express lanes, of course. But to dovetail a little bit of John's discussion about the side traffic. Georgia just ended FY '21 with 3.7 billion surplus. Are you, is GDOT coordinating with, say, Georgia State Patrol for additional patrolmen for 3.7 billion? I bet you we could put some good traffic patrol officers along the top end during this lane reduction on 285.
Well, the, that is, additional law enforcement is within the scope of the the contract for the developer to arrange. And they have been doing that where needed on a lot of the local, the the streets that are impacted by the lane closures that have been implemented so far in the project. Right now, we really haven't had a lot of daytime closures. There may have been very few. But the nighttime closures, there's always local law enforcement that the developer gets, or the contractor gets to assist them with those lane closures. As far as additional patrolling, I, that's not something that has been done at this point by the developer or GDOT. Where basically, we will have additional heroes patrolling the area and monitoring it during the lane reduction so that if there is an incident, they can help move it to the available shoulder to allow law enforcement or emergency services more room to respond.
Right, I'm I'm looking at the enforcement perspective of speeds, additional speed limit enforcement of the traffic, right? It's what, it's supposedly, what is it, 55 miles an hour construction zone now posted? Is that what it is on 285?
Yes.
Yeah, so if if we, I'd really like to see, because if we have people enforcing this, you know, people are going to be the back road cut through. I believe one time Brookhaven was having conversations with Waze a few years ago, the city of Brookhaven, to offset their algorithms and try to divert people. I think other communities in the US have tried to work with Waze to avoid that. And if we had additional Georgia State Patrol there to make sure people are staying on 285 and managing that speeds, that'll be additional for safety, right? Because when they come into the beginning of construction zone, I know at night I've seen the patrol officers there with the blue lights flashing, they're kind of, they're just standing there. But I'm I'm looking at it, trying to have more of a holistic view of of safety, additional patrols, leveraging some of that state surplus, which would be beneficial. So something for consideration.
Yes, I will make note of that.
Right, thanks, Marla.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Artie, have anything? Jim?
I mean, anybody who's watched 285 construction for the decades I have, can, you know, and can read plans, knows that this is going to be a bloody mess and that's as nice as I can say it. I think we, you know, we can all just admit that right up front. I guess the question is, has there been any modeling of this? How ugly is it is really, you know, do we have any kind of a measure of that? Are we just going to close down the lanes and see how ugly it gets?
No, we have done some modeling and actually, you know, you may not believe what our modeling shows, but it shows that it it's not going to be as bad as we all think. Because, and the reason is because if you, if you think about westbound, you are, you have a lot of volume, that westbound volume that's not going through. A lot of it is trying to access the local interchanges or 400. So in advance of the area where we're reducing the lanes, we also have opened up the the, some new lanes. So you're gonna have traffic that is going to Peachtree Dunwoody. They have a ramp, you know, so that volume's gonna leave. And then you have the the traffic that's going to 400. And we have an improved ramp from 400 northbound to, excuse me, from 285 westbound to 400 northbound that opened a few months ago. So you're pulling that volume of traffic off. And then you have the westbound CD lane that we opened this summer. And, you know, you're going to pull the 400 southbound traffic off. And then you're going to also, at that same point, pull that Roswell Road traffic off. And then you also will allow the option of some of the through traffic to be pulled off of the main line because you have the through access back to 285 westbound. So the models are showing, because you've pulled all that exiting traffic off, that the level of service actually improves over the the Nobil, I mean, the condition, right now, what's going on right now. So I was looking for the paper so I could have it in front of me. But it actually is showing westbound that you're going to go, of course, in the area where you have all that traffic coming off, you're going to have a level of service F. That's where all the, because that's where all the turbulence is. But once you get past that point, it's actually showing you have a BC all the way up until you get back to Roswell Road. And then similarly, in the eastbound direction, you know, you're you're pulling the traffic off to go to Glen Ridge. And then you're put, we built the, you know, that new ramp that I highlighted. And then you've got the ramp that I mentioned that's pulling the traffic off that goes to 400 northbound and southbound. So that's a lot of volume. And then you have the eastbound ramp to Ashford Dunwoody that opened last weekend. So that's pulling a lot of volume off. So the models are showing, of course, in that area where you have all that exiting happening, you've got a level of service F, but once you get past there, it jumps up significantly. That, this is what the models are showing. So, you know, it it is a model, you know, and we will observe it to see how close it actually is to predicting what happens. But it's showing that it may not be as horrific through that area as we're thinking. But because, you know, you've got to pass through those areas where you've got the level of service F, that's where we're expecting the the most of the delay. And that's why we're advising, you know, for the longer travel times, the slower speeds. And, you know, of course, if there's a a crash or there's some rain on 285, that also impacts the traffic flow.
All right, well, thank you for that explanation. I, you know, I I I will cross my fingers and hope it works the way y'all are showing. That what what you just said makes lots of sense and let's hope for all of our sakes that it works out per the models. I I I wish there was a little bit more time upfront before you started these closures for people to get used to all the new traffic flows and exits. But I also understand the need to keep this thing rolling, so that, you know, it is what it is. Would people just have to get used to all these new ramps on the fly? Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Marla, thanks for the presentation. Yeah, I, I don't think there's any way to sugarcoat, sugarcoat how miserable the top end is going to be for the next six months. And I, like Jim said, I hope your your models are right, but I just, I just see a a sea of of cars. I, I want to echo Councilman Hennigan's concerns about the wayfinding, putting additional traffic onto already stressed surface streets through the neighborhood. There is got to be, I know up in the northeast, there were communities that worked with Waze to circumvent that and essentially block off routes. And I don't know if that's a GDOT function or our own public works, but we need to make sure that we mitigate that to the best that we can because it's going to be a disaster. I I have another question on the wayfinding. Are the updates to those maps in real time? So for example, if I were heading eastbound on 285 today, would it put me off at the correct location for the new access ramp to Ashford Dunwoody?
They have been provided all the new information. And so it is my understanding that if you put it in now, that you will be directed to the new ramp.
At the appropriate place, okay, because
Yeah.
as some of these initial ramps were opening, there was, the signage was not the most clear. And I've heard a lot of complaints and experienced myself, some, some confusion with trying to navigate. And and that, those growing pains are inevitable with this scale of change. But I I have two concerns. I have one concern with safety where people are going to all of a sudden say, oh, my gosh, there's my exit and try and shoot over two lanes and and make some poor choices behind the wheel. But I'm also concerned with, I just drove past my exit ramp. Now I've got to go down to Shambly Dunwoody and do U-turn. And now we're putting additional traffic stresses on an already congested intersection and then spinning them back around to go back to the highway. So I just want to, I I just want to make sure that that is been addressed with the wayfinding. And and hopefully, you know, I guess I'll drive out that way tomorrow. But hopefully the signage is appropriate as well for that.
Well, we, thank you for those comments. And we really have not gotten any negative feedback today after the the ramp opened. There was, when it first opened, a lot of traffic at Shambly Dunwoody. But we worked with your signal timing group and they had implemented some different timing plan. And that really cleared it up. And I I haven't received any comments to, you know, any, from the public today concerning any backups or anything.
All right, that's encouraging. Thank you.
Artie.
Evening, Marla. Thank you very much for the, for the presentation. Much appreciated. Two quick things. First one is, well, besides avoiding that area altogether, is there, are there times that you might suggest to us to just avoid it? Is this one of these constructions where it's going to go on mostly at night? Or is it slated to be to happen most of the time? Especially I'm looking at when the construction of the three, reconstruction, rather, of the three bridges.
Actually, there's going to be work going on on those bridges 24 hours a day. That's the plan is to, that's why they're opening up the area above and below. And the plan is to to work on all three concurrently, round the clock.
Okay. Second question, well, maybe a suggestion. So, so what's happening as I travel the area of, if you're going, I guess, eastbound to westbound on 285 and you're trying to maneuver to that new northbound and southbound 400. And so what happens is that you see the people and then they they kind of slow down and all of a sudden, some of them hit the brake because they figured, you know, there's, 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 it's a different exit. Are there ways, maybe, maybe it's happening, I don't see it, maybe that this could be illuminated, signals or or arrows or something to kind of make it easier?
Well, as more of the project gets complete and the overhead signage is added, I think that will help drivers more so because they they'll be able to get in the particular lane for where they're going earlier. And so that diving over at the last minute or stopping short will be decreased. Right now, in the current stage of construction, really the the signage that we have is all that we'd be able to implement, which is the ground mounted signs along with the pavement markings. So we'll try to, we will make sure that those pavement markings stay clear because I know it is a different pattern, you know, a traffic pattern. And a lot of people are depending on those pavement markings to line themselves up with the right exit. So we'll, we'll do our part in making sure that those don't fade before the permanent pavement markings are put down.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a few questions. Starting Artie's questions was a good start. So when the initial ramp to 2, 400, south and north, and Roswell Road, all that opened, it was a cluster. There was no signs. And it was, social media people tagged me, even though it's Sandy Springs. And Michael Smith, our Public Works Director, reached out to GDOT. And the contractor offered like three choices to GDOT. But this is not, this is, this is something where spending money for something temporary probably makes sense. So I would argue that if you could sign it better, it would go a long way. So a lot of people, for example, were ending up on 400 north when they didn't need to be on 400 north. And I don't know how much time you spend on 400 north, but it's generally really congested. And so, which, so the people ending up on there accidentally didn't help. So my suggestion is, is that GDOT ought to have someone driving through this area on a regular basis who's not familiar with it. So it needs to be like different people. And they need to say, oh, I was trying to go here and the signs did not point me there. You know, GDOT doesn't ask the contractors to do more than the the minimum. And I think they're cutting off all our noses to spite our faces. And so the, I go fairly frequently these days, 400 south. But it still is not intuitive. And yes, it's painted on the road. Right, because it's, it's not, it points two different directions. So my suggestion is, is to have someone look at it regularly. Okay, so that was my first thing. My second thing is, is if you could go to the Peachtree Dunwoody, Hammond, Glen Ridge slide, it's slide 20, I think. Just so I can ask you some specific questions about that, because I didn't totally understand.
Let's see.
All right. Keep going.
This one, this one?
Nope, it's the one that's proposed, the one-way pair upcoming. Okay, not that one. Whoops.
I think
Yeah, I think it's after this.
Yeah, this one.
There, okay. Could you expla, I'm not great with maps. It's not, it's not something I'm ashamed to admit. Can you explain to me, someone in, right outside the perimeter on Shambly Dunwoody Road, how the ambulance is going to take them to the hospital? Yeah, so they're, they're coming from Shambly, no, they're coming from Shambly Dunwoody. They need to get to Northside Hospital.
Okay.
And they go west on 285?
If you're coming from Shambly Dunwoody, yes, you will be able to get on 285 westbound. And you will be able to get off at Peachtree Dunwoody. And you will be able to go south towards the hospital.
Okay, so now the ambulance is, drop the patient off and they need to get back to Dunwoody. Do they now go Johnson's Fair? I know that won't work. So how do they get back to Dunwoody?
So they can
Like her, and can you turn left, somebody remind me, can you turn left from Lake Huron on to Ashford Dunwoody? Yes, okay, all right, so that's fine. Oh, you can take the flyover bridge, but not if your fire station is by your house. By John, if it's not on the east side, you, but you can turn left on Lake Huron to, okay. All right, so we struggle with ambulance times in Dunwoody anyway. And so the, if this is going to happen, the faster that they can get us back to normal, the better. Because, and it's not just Dunwoody, it's all of DeKalb. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on that. This is something I forgot to ask earlier that I meant to ask. Are there going to be any sort of, I know we're crunching down the size of the lanes, any sort of breakdown or or shoulder lane? Because with the anticipated backup of traffic, I'm very concerned that ambulances will not be able to get through the gridlock and get to the hospital. Has that been, have accommodations been made for emergency vehicles to get through this area?
Yes, there will be shoulders that, in some places, especially right over the bridges, they'll be very, very narrow. But there will be shoulders. And as I mentioned, there will be heroes that are monitoring the area and patrolling so that if there is any kind of emergency situation, they can help address it. And then the contractor also, of course, will allow access to emergency vehicles and will assist with any incident response. and will assist with any incident response.
Okay. And then my final question was. Oh, so I did the Ashford Dunwoody ramp on Saturday. Intentionally, I was coming from Buckhead. And something wasn't flowing right. So when you turned left to go north on Ashford Dunwoody, you were stuck. You couldn't get over to the through lanes. Like, so if you don't want to turn left, so it didn't matter if you were in the right or the left lane. I don't know if that's like a new thing, like if, so, and it may be an issue with the way the diverging diamond was working or not working. But traffic, or maybe it was just the volume of traffic. And so I guess what needs to happen is, is that, like, our Public Works Director needs to test it out, other people need to test it out.
Well, I, I drove it through several times. And what I noticed was because the traffic was slower on two eighty-five, it was backing up the ramp. And so we, we have been discussing that and looking into it. Of course, as more of the project gets complete, that will improve as the more of that westbound CD line is constructed. And as more of the improvements on four hundred northbound are constructed, that will improve. But we've been looking at maybe where, what's causing that? And if there's anything that can be done to address it. If it's with some signal timing, if it's with, maybe if there's a possibility of opening up another lane in a certain area, you know, we, we have noticed that. But I think that backup is basically due to the traffic that's headed toward four hundred northbound that's backing up in the two eighty-five lane.
Wait, so did you do it from four hundred south to Ash, Ashford Dunwoody?
Um, I did it from, no, I did it from four, from two eighty-five east to Ashford Dunwoody.
So I, yeah, I did it from four hundred north. And it's the same issue, I think it's not flowing. The other slight thing, and I didn't try it, is it looks awfully hard to get over, to get to Shambly Dunwoody. From the, so when you come up four hundred, I didn't, the merging, I was watching it as I was getting off on Ashford, because I was exiting Ashford Dunwoody. And I don't know if we've had any complaints about that.
I haven't received it. I haven't, yes, we will watch it. I will make a note of that. I haven't received any complaints.
It was never perfectly easy, like when you were, it was never such an easy exit to begin with. But it looks like maybe the lane, I don't know, I couldn't tell because I wasn't on it. But thank you. Anybody else, Joe?
Follow up on the, the bridge decking, on the new bridges on Peachtree Dunwoody and Glen Ridge. Yeah, John was, John Henigan was alluding to. So we've been in discussions, our Public Works Director, Michael Smith, with the future potential replacement on Shambly Dunwoody Bridge, where we're looking at a concept design of what we want, not only it to look like as you're driving under it or around it, but what it would look like on the, on the decking as well to, to people going through and so on with the multi-use path and so on. So the conversation probably needs to go back to Michael Smith, but we're trying to get that similar look and feel within the PCID region. So the other bridge deckings, I know Ashford Dunwoody is not going to be done. But skipping beyond that, the Peachtree Dunwoody and the Glen Ridge, I think we just have to have a follow-up, Marlo, with our Public Works Director, Michael Smith and, and PCID on, on what that's going to look like?
We're working on that. PCA is working on it. So we're in the conversation.
Okay.
So.
And we have provided our details to the top end team so that they could know what our bridges, what the decorative features are so that they can match those.
Thank you so much for your time.
Oh, well, thank you all. I definitely appreciate being invited. And, you know, if you need any additional information, then I would, will come back anytime you need and provide anything I can by email.
And you'll keep us updated. I know y'all are keeping Jennifer, our, Betta, our Communications Director, updated as the schedule seems to continually change.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, thank you so much, Marlo.
All right.
For those of you in the listening audience, at our next meeting, Tim Matthews will be here, who's, somebody from the project team, I think Tim Matthews, but it could be somebody else, is going to be here on October eleventh to talk about the managed lanes project, which has not started, but is potentially much more impactful to Dunwoody than this project. So thank you, Marlo.
All right, thank you all. I appreciate being invited and have a nice evening.
You too. All right. All right, so next up is the consent agenda.
Move to approve?
Second.
By Stacy, second by John. Any questions or discussion on any of these agenda items? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously.
Mayor, the next item, moving to item number seven under business items, is an ordinance to amend the city of Dunwoody zoning classification and map of lot parcel number eighteen three sixty-six. I think that's the wrong ordinance, just one moment. Isn't that the wrong one, Paul? Should be the RZ, first one moment.
Yeah, the RZ twenty-one dash one.
Just one second.
But we could, we'll do a little presentation for both of them.
Right.
The first one on the agenda is twenty-one oh one.
Somebody grab that, get that one up here.
It's correct on the agenda, just, okay, thank you. It is.
Yeah. Not correct either. Just bear with me a moment, Mayor. I will read, I will just read from the agenda, if it's okay. The second read of RZ twenty-one dash oh one, resigning of fifty-five hundred Shambly Dunwoody Road and twelve forty-four Dunwoody Village Parkway from the current C one conditional, which is local commercial district, and Dunwoody Village Everleigh District to the DV one Village Commercial and DV four Village Center District. Paul Landhart.
Thank you, Sharon. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'll combine the presentation again for both of these agenda items because they go hand in hand. And I'll do a brief presentation for the changes. Since the last meeting, some of you were in active negotiations with the neighbors or the property owner. Us likewise, I want to summarize all of that really quick. If there's any questions about any of these conditions that I go over in a minute, please let me know and I can expand on that. Overall, you see that the, on, on this map, you see that the zoning has changed. So instead of everything being zoned to the DV four district, shown in pink, the westernmost hundred and fifty feet, which overlap with the buffer and open space area, are now proposed to be resoned to the DV one district, which is the commercial district in purple here. In addition, the understood buffer, as required, has increased from thirty-five to fifty feet. In parallel, the required open space has decreased from a hundred and fifteen feet to one hundred feet. So on this, this slide shows one fifty, but it's actually one hundred. That's fifty feet buffer, a hundred feet open space for a total of a hundred and fifty feet that remains unchanged. As part of this agreement, there's also seven new zoning conditions that we would ask for you to consider. And I will go over some of these in a bit of detail to explain them. Others I'll just reference. The first one here, at the request of the developer, all this does is it summarizes that for certain density measurements of anything that is regulated based on square footage, on acreage, on, on site area, the hundred and fifty feet to the west, sort of this open space and buffer count two, so they can shift the density over to the eastern part of the property. They can shift the lot coverage over to the eastern part of the. This is, this is normally how we do it. This is not different than how we would do it. But this is just like to restate this because it's somewhat of an unusual zoning. Second zoning condition references animal care and boarding services. So any increase or any new use would require a special land use permit. Any existing, which is the animal daycare up there, can remain. It's considered grandfathered in. Number three has changed since we posted the, the document. I have the changes here in red. What this does is it, it is the intent of the developer to preserve certain stands of specimen trees and specimen trees of the larger trees on the site to preserve those while being able to remove other trees on the site for the open space use. What we're doing here is we're adding sort of a quantitative measurement, which is five specimen trees. The five specimen trees outside of the required stream buffer will have to remain. That said, we do not know how many specimen trees there are. So there could be as low as zero specimen trees. There could be as many, could be a large number of specimen trees. Right now, we, we don't know, the developer doesn't know. So what we're asking for is before the removal of trees in there, we would ask for a comprehensive tree study or comprehensive tree survey to allow us to regulate this. On the right-hand side, I have what a specimen tree is. So it's a, a large tree, depending on the species. There's a certain minimum trunk size for the tree. And they have to be in good health, more or less, with a certain life expectancy. Dark sky compliant lighting will be required on, in, in all of the open space areas. So in this open space, that may be a future park use and maybe some other public area, lighting has to be dark sky compliant. And then on the right-of-way, like for the proposed street, that has to be dark sky compliant. And then forty feet into the remainder of the property, any western-facing facade has to be dark, or any lighting on this facade has to be dark sky compliant also. And above-ground structures in the hundred and fifty feet open space area will be limited with zoning condition number five to open air structures such as gazebos and a fully enclosed restroom facility. The location of that is limited to the easternmost fifty feet of this open space area. So the part that's furthest away from the neighbors. This condition also prohibits use of amphitheater or sports fields or those more intense public uses that would have more of a, a soundscape associated with it. Condition number six addresses attention facilities. Here, I think it was the wish of the neighbors for there not to be a detention pond, so sort of a surface pond. So this limited to more or less underground detention facilities in that area. And then seven wasn't part of your package because it's, it just reached us in the last couple of days. And here, it's again the wish of the neighbors for a fence to be constructed on the property line. And that will be a four-foot vinyl-coated chain link fence that'll have to be installed at the time of the first certificate of occupancy, should the property be developed. Again, reminder, we would ask your, should you wish to approve it today, to approve both agenda items, to not approve one of them and not the other? Because some of these regulations are carried over through the text amendments that are in the second, the second agenda item. Again, your package also had only six conditions. We would ask you to adjust the motion here to address the seven conditions as I presented them. And lastly, there is currently still a development moratorium. There's a moratorium for permits that goes for the two subject parcels. And I would ask you, should you wish to approve it today to add an additional agenda item for resolution to end the moratorium starting today? Also, I think Mr. Riley will be able to advise on exactly how to do it the right way. If there are any further questions, please, please do ask.
And I just want to clarify that this was the presentation for both, second reads of both the items in front of us. So you provided information on both. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to move to approve.
Moved by Stacy, second by Jim. All right, I now, I know there's questions and discussion, but, or maybe I think there is. Go ahead, Tom, you have anything? Jim?
Great job, ball and ball. Thank you very much.
No, I'm just, it was all, it was good.
I'll come back to Stacy because she has, go ahead, Joe.
From a procedural, do we need to make a motion to amend to add point?
Once, we would do the discussion and then do the amendment. Just wanted to get the motion on the floor.
That was Mike's question as well. Job well done on everybody. Good job well done on the neighbors for working through the process. So kudos to them, but yes, let's make some changes.
Okay, Stacy.
Again, thank you for everybody for their involvement for, I hope we got a lot of questions answered. I think a lot of Dunwoody citizens are more of a worst on, on zoning codes and stream buffers and everything. The more educated populace we have, you know, the better it is. I'd like, I guess, make a motion to amend.
That's correct. So we have a motions made and seconded. And so now Stacy can amend it, right? Go ahead. Go ahead.
Second.
Oh, for you to tell us what you're amending.
Amending the zoning conditions.
Right. Do we need to read, Sharon, do we need to say what those conditions are that are amended? Yes, I think you have to highlight them.
So I'd like to amend the proposed zoning conditions, RZ twenty-one dash oh one. Number three shall read, within the easternmost one hundred feet of the hundred and fifty-foot open space area, the fifty to a hundred-foot area, as measured from the property line, select stands as specimen's trees are to be, are to be preserved before tree removal of any trees except for dead, diseased, dying, insect-infested or hazardous trees in said area. A comprehensive tree survey of said area shall be completed. A minimum of five specimen trees outside of any stream buffer, if they exist, shall be preserved in said area. For any specimen trees in excess of meeting this threshold, the regulations of the tree ordinance shall govern. I'd also like to amend it and add a point number seven to the zoning conditions. A four-foot vinyl-coated chain link fence shall delineate the one hundred and fifty-foot open space area along the western property line and may be installed at any time, but shall be installed no later than the time the first certificate of occupancy is issued for any redevelopment.
Second.
Okay, anybody have questions for Stacy or staff? All right, if not, I call the question on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the amendment passes unanimously. So now we're back to the amended motion. Any discussion or questions on the motion?
Can we end the moratorium?
We have to separate, we'll have separate items, so we'll get there. Thank you. Any further questions or discussion on this agenda item? Seeing none, I call the question on the amended item for RZ two-one dash oh one. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition signify by saying no. Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Right, Sharon has to read.
Moving to agenda item number eight, an ordinance to amend the city of Dunwoody zoning classification and map of lot parcel eighteen three sixty-six zero one zero zero one and eighteen three sixty-six zero one zero two-two in consideration of zoning case RZ twenty-one dash oh one for fifty-five hundred Shambly Dunwoody Road and twelve forty-four Dunwoody Village Parkway.
Thank you, Sharon. So this is the most, we need a motion, well, I guess, discussions or questions on this item for staff or council people? Go ahead, John.
Move, move to approve, second.
Moved by John, second by Joe. Any questions or discussion on this item? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying no. Seeing none, the motion passes. And I am extremely grateful. Any opposed signify by saying no. Seeing none, the motion passes and I am extremely grateful for everyone who spent lots of time making this happen and I'm pleased that we have concluded this process. So thank you all for participating and working hard to get this done. Councilwoman Harris.
At this time, I'd like to make a movement to adjourn, to amend the agenda, to add an additional item.
Okay, so what are you suggesting we add as the new number nine?
The removal of the moratorium in the village.
Bill, can you confirm we're doing, oh, wait first. So there's a motion on the floor to amend the agenda. We have to vote on that first. All right, so Stacy moved, we amend the agenda. John seconded it. Any further, just any questions on the move to amend the agenda? Seeing none, I call the question all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. All right, now Councilwoman Harris, the new number nine.
The new number nine, I moved to remove the village moratorium on building, on permits.
On the two parcels. I think we need the address or something, someone.
From the number.
For, on, to remove the moratorium on permits for fifty-five hundred Shambly Dunwoody Road and twelve forty-four Dunwoody Village Parkway.
Thank you. All right, there's a motion on the floor.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any questions or discussion on this? Go ahead, John.
Request legal comment.
Right.
Sorry, I was supposed to see manager on that.
Can we get legal? Are we following the correct process of removing the moratorium? Have we acted it properly and is it the appropriate time to do so?
It would be. You can, you can add to the agenda on any item that was not contemplated. Since you didn't know what you were going to vote, whether you're going to finish this other one up tonight. It was appropriate to go ahead and add it. And once you, once you've finished the other business of changing your zoning and it's no longer needed to protect it, you can go ahead and remove it instanter.
Okay. Believe we have a motion on the floor, all in favor of removing the moratorium, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you. And again, thank everyone who's spent a lot of time on this.
Mayor, the next item is an ordinance to amend chapter sixteen land development regulations of the city of Dunwoody code of ordinances to include language for expired permits and to amend the language for appeals.
Move to approve.
Are we ha, I mean, I'm, are we having a presentation? Okay, sorry. But right, right, we'll just, right, I was like, wait a minute, am I missing something?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm here for the second read on the text amendments to chapter eight, sixteen, twenty-six and twenty-seven. As discussed at the last city council meeting, the goal of these text amendments is to clean up the existing code rather than make any extensive changes. Our goals are to correct inconsistencies, clarify vague language and improve processes. We feel that these amendments will be both to the benefit of city staff and the community. There are fourteen total proposed amendments. This is the complete list. We reviewed these items in detail again at the first read. During the first read, you all flagged several items of interest in the interest of time. I will only be presenting on those select items. And again, in the interest of time, I will also be presenting all of my agenda items at once, including the companion resolution for the updated fee schedule. The first item I'd like to discuss is the design professional requirements for construction permits in section eight dash twenty-seven of our code. Based on feedback received at the last meeting, staff updated the language to specify that engineered drawings are only required for new construction and new additions. Next, we also discussed the reissuing expired permits again in section eight dash twenty-seven as well. At the nine dash thirteen meeting, we, you all had expressed concern regarding abandoned construction projects. I consulted with our code enforcement department about the procedure for dealing with this issue. Essentially, the code enforcement department enforces the property maintenance code, so that ensures that the grass is cut and that pests are controlled. However, we cannot require them to finish construction. Demolishing the abandoned structures is a lengthy process and it's very time intensive. It would either need to be something that gets taken through the court, or we would need to develop some sort of blight program. Overall, the purpose of this specific amendment to section eight dash twenty-seven is narrow and is intended to allow projects to start or resume work after the permit has expired. Abandoned structures that don't wish to resume work would need to be handled through another avenue. And of course, at the behest of council, we would be happy to research potential solutions to that issue that was brought to our attention at the last meeting. Next, I'm going to address chapter sixteen. This item is also related to the design professional requirements, but instead of construction permits, it's for our land disturbance permits. This language, it reflects the language in section eight dash twenty-seven. I'm now also going to move into chapter twenty-six. We discussed obstruction in the right-of-way. This code section outlaws the obstruction. At the previous meeting, council requested that staff research incorporating sightlines into the amendment. So we did look into this and did some more research. Measuring sightlines and sight distance requires a much different procedure and specialized tools and materials. Overall, the goal of this amendment is to have a simple code section that staff can use to remove immediate obstructions such as construction wrap blowing into the road or abandoned property blocking ADA access on sidewalks. Again, at the behest of council, staff would be happy to further research the sightline issues in the city. But it's sort of outside of the scope of what we're trying to accomplish with this amendment. Lastly, staff updated the code sections twenty-seven dash four oh two and four twenty-five for concurrent variances and concurrent special exceptions. Based on the feedback we received at the last meeting, we updated it to allow the planning commission the option to defer up to three times. This is the same allowance provided to the planning commission when they're reviewing planned development districts. Lastly, we have a companion resolution to update the fee schedule. This is a companion resolution to the amendments number two and three for time limitations. So that's referring back to reissuing expired permits. So we are proposing to add a fee for reissuing these permits and that fee would be ten percent of the original total fee. So that consists of, you know, all of the administrative fees, the permit inspection fees, et cetera, up to a maximum of ten thousand dollars. So again, I would be happy to answer any questions you have on any of the amendments or this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Madeline. So I think we can discuss all four at once if council's comfortable with that. All right, so Madeline left, but maybe, who has questions? Right. Sorry, just in case anybody has questions. John?
Thank you. I have a issue with chapter eight, section twenty-seven, design professional. I'm looking to probably strike number five, new residential additions that are on the second or third story and or used engineered products. The reason is, is that I reached out to several of our design, construction, build professionals in the area to see how this impacted them and is it onerous, is it needed? And the way it was described to me is that when it comes to structural aspects, sure, some oversight's a good thing, but that's already done. If, as far as complete set of drawings being presented for a second story, that's typically not how it's done today by the people who do that construction. It's a design, build, construction firm where they do it all in-house. They're not engineered professionally certified for every outlet, for every drawing aspect. But they have the construction certification on the structural aspect from the material itself. And if you look at Munich code under design, under section two, Madeline, I don't know if you can get to Munich code, but if you can explain to me the additional data in that section B two, which is right before the section in which we are looking to modify, it currently says additional data. The building official may require details, computation, stress diagrams and other data necessary to describe the construction or installation and the basis of calculations. All drawing specifications and accompanying data required by the building official to be to be prepared by an architect or engineer shall be affixed with official seal. So basically, that paragraph there is under the construction standards and the structural integrity of the drawings that already is required. But as far as having the complete set of plans done by an architect and certified when it comes to a second story building, that's not being done today. And they, it would be onerous in the sense of the cost and the, to implement. I talked to two of our home builders. One is Harbor Town Construction, which is Mr. Tom Dwyer, who I believe is on our construction board. And the other is Craig Paso of Paso Construction, both of whom have done numerous homes in Dunwoody second stories and both are adamantly against this aspect, especially as this paragraph number two already has that requirement in there in the sense that the city can ask for things if needed, but.
I make a suggestion rather than putting Madeline on the spot that we just, because these are all in different chapters, right? Which number are you talking about? Is this eleven or the new twelve or whatever?
Eleven, yes. But you said you wanted to discuss them in any.
Yeah, no, 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 that's fine. But if we feel like you need a deferral, that's fine too.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the other aspects of chapter eight. This is one line. I, I would like to make a motion to delete item five and if, if the city.
Don't we have to have a motion on the amendment for, on the item first and then you're amending it?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
For discussion.
Okay, for discussion. Okay, thank you. I'm just.
I'd like to at some point tonight.
Right.
Defer or delete item five out of that section. And if staff feels it's necessary to come back, it can come back. But at that time, we can make sure we engage with the business community that does this exact type of work to make sure it's the right thing to do.
That's fine.
So that's, that's my only issue. I'm answered. Happy to answer any questions, but the way the industry works now, two of our prominent builders that do second story additions, they say this is overkill versus the regulations that are already in effect.
Okay. Joe, do you have any questions or comments on any of these? Stacy? You, Jim? Okay. Okay. So with that, I think we have, Sharon's read the new number, I just, the number nine. And so the next up, right? Right, everything's plus one. So just for, yeah, like I'll keep that straight. But number ten. So no, any specific questions or comments on number ten? All right, well, these are action items today. His number. Well, the twelve, the new twelve.
Move to approve?
Okay, move to approve by Councilwoman Harris, seconded by.
Second.
Which chapter are we doing?
The first one, number.
The new number ten.
The new number ten. The old number nine.
So chapter sixteen.
Chapter sixteen, yes.
Thank you.
So there's a motion, Joe seconded. Can you, are we, do we need quick? Yeah, we do. Councilwoman Harris made the motion. Sorry, I was getting to that. There's just a little confusion. Joe seconded it to pass the text amendments to chapter sixteen land development regulations. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, I call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Okay. So that's the new number ten, it passed. Now we're on to the new number eleven, which Sharon has to read.
An ordinance to amend chapter twenty-seven zoning ordinance of the city of Dunwoody code of ordinances to amend language for expired and obsolete zoning districts where you're setback measurement. OI allowed uses, use determinations, residential infield, relatives, relatives residences, posted notices, perimeter center, open space and appeals to add a new section for concurrent variances and special exceptions.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussions? Okay, seeing none, I call the question all in favor. Signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Now we are on to the new number twelve. All right, Sharon, when you're ready.
Almost.
That's fine, no worries, no worries, no worries, no worries, no worries.
An ordinance to amend chapter eight, building and building regulations of the city of Dunwoody code of ordinances to amend language for expired permits and design professional requirements.
Move to approve.
Moved by John, seconded by Jim. All right, any further discussion? Counsel, hand, hand again.
I'd like to make a motion to amend chap, I'm sorry, it's chapter eight, twenty, section twenty-seven, three, A, five. I'd like to delete line five, which states new residential additions that are on a second or third story and or use engineered products. I'd like to delete that line.
Move by, there's an amended amendment on the floor, moved by John, seconded by Jim. Any questions or discussion about this one? Joe?
I would, I'll make a counter motion. We'll have to get into Robert's rules of motion to do, just defer this entire item so we can have a conversation. Bring in those experts to hear what they have to say. I appreciate John telling me that audible, audibly, but I'd like to read it. I know it's one sentence, but I'd like to have a little bit more information before I move forward with adopting the new code.
All right, so, well, first we need a second for the deferral.
Jim, oh, no.
No.
I would, yeah, I would, I would move to defer this item if there's a second.
Okay, that motion fails. John, I believe your request was if staff feels like this is a necessary change, we'll go ahead and change the stuff about the other stuff in this.
Yes, I've reviewed.
Yes.
All the other changes and they are necessary. There was this one that based on paragraph two above it, staff has some leeway to do things that they think they need to do. But putting this requirement in writing is onerous in the sense of the, it would, it would force the hand. The number two allows them to do the background on structural and get structural information that they need and have that engineered if so needed, but not have the whole thing engineered. So if staff wants to come back and do this again, they can bring it back to us. It will go through the full read. It'll, we will get the right businesses involved who I don't believe were involved with this amendment previously. Some of them were not aware of it until today when I had those phone calls. So I would, again, I would like to delete number five and if necessary, can come back to us full cycle. It takes a couple of months, but it's.
Right, so staff has their, go ahead, Joe.
Is, John, just trying to clarify for me, is, was, was the line, a new line that has been added? And we're just saying, let's just go back and.
There are, right now, there are no requirements for new additions that are on the second or third story. So that does not exist. We are putting requirements that do not exist.
All right.
Correctly today.
I appreciate that clarification, John. I, and I'll just put this out for public. I had, I was misleading. I was thinking that it was something that. Yeah, thank you.
All right, so seeing, so there's an amendment on the floor to strike that line, number five, right, Sharon, you have all that?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion for the amendment carries. Now we're back to the original amended motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor of the amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you.
The, the next item is the new number 13. In ordinance to amend chapter 26, street sidewalks and other public places of the city of Dunwoody code of ordinances to amend language for obstruction in the right of way.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by John, second by Stacy. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Signify by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you unanimously. All right, thank you, Madeline. I think we finished all those, right?
We did.
Well, no, I mean, we have other business, but we finished Madeline's. Yeah, we have more. Oh, yeah, she has to come back in a minute. Sorry, Madeline.
The next item is the new number 14. In ordinance to amend chapter 24 offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the city of Dunwoody code of ordinances to strengthen the prosecution of prostitution, expand definition of illicit acts and for other purposes, city attorney's office.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a, the same thing that we brought to you on the previous occasion for the preliminary item. This is a, just to clean up on the, our existing ordinances. Uh, there's been some questions to public places on hotel motel rooms have been challenges by defense lawyers on that. We'd like to strengthen up the, the, the ordinance on this and have further definition. The second part of this ordinance is where we're, we're also identifying pimps who drive persons to locations to, to sell sex and also who act as lookouts on the outside in the parking lots to give the officers the opportunity to enforce the, enforce the law against them more appropriately. These, of course, the pimps are really the purvey, the purveyors on this. And we think that this significantly strengthens our opportunity to, to go against them. As I said previously, our, our, our law enforcement is, is, is very tuned into this. They work closely with the federal government on this. They have, they have sent pimps from, that have been arrested here in, in Dunwoody to federal prosecution for the federal prosecution. It has significant long jail time for interstate trafficking of humans. So I would ask that on your second read that, that you would pass this through.
All right, anybody have, go ahead, John.
Move to approve.
Okay, anybody have questions? Go ahead, Stacy.
Um, in our surrounding jurisdictions, is there anyone else that has language like this in their code that you're aware of?
This is an update of what basically has been existing code in most of the jurisdictions. I would think that they'll start picking our code up and it'll, it'll translate into the rest of them. That's generally what happens.
I would hope so, and thank you to our police department. Thank you to you for, for trying to codify, codify this and give our officers more tools in their toolbox, and I can't wait to pass it.
Anybody else? All right, this is the first read. We'll see it in two weeks.
Yes.
And Stacy said, thank you. Was discussion, it was, that's our new model. So thank you. All right.
Mayor, the next item, item number 15 is a resolution to amend the city of Dunwoody Community Development fee schedule, Madeline Smith.
Uh, move to approve.
Yeah, right. Now, this is an action item, actually. I had included this in my previous presentation, but just to refresh you all, we are looking to include a new fee since you have passed the amendment to allow permits to be reissued. This is a companion resolution that includes a fee for reissuing permits. As I said, it would be 10% of the original total fees up to a maximum of $10,000.
And just so I can understand, this is, but this is our regular fee schedule and we're just adding the, the little yellow, right? So just for future, like on the R rezoning, it seems a little cheap, like inexpensive, given that we're never going to have 10 to 20 acres very rarely. So I don't know when we talk about that, but maybe we can talk about that at some point. All right. But any questions on the rest of this? Seeing none, this is an action item.
Move to approve.
Move by Joe, second by, I think maybe Artie. Yeah, Artie. I couldn't, I couldn't hear because I, I mean, I couldn't see because I was looking the other way. Um, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously.
Item number 16 is requesting authorization to surplus three police vehicles and sell them to Pickens County Sheriff's Office, Linda Neighbors.
Good evening.
Thank you.
So we have three police vehicles that we would like to surplus and we have intent to purchase from Pickens County Sheriff's Office. There's, um, they all have pretty much, there's a 2013 Chevy Tahoe, a 2012 Chevy Tahoe and a 2015 Ford Explorer. And they are up there in mileage and like I said, the Pickens County Sheriff's Office would like to buy them $7,000 for the Chevy Tahos each and $9,000 for the Explorer.
All right, this is an action item as well. Does there any questions?
Should I move this time?
Yes, go ahead. Yay. Okay, that was moved by Artie and seconded by Jim. Any further questions or discussion? Go ahead, Jim.
I don't think so. Not yet.
Okay, thank you.
We may need a future community vehicles if we put in more community police officers.
Uh, seeing no discussion, I call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Oh, I didn't ask. Anybody opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. Sorry.
Item number 17 is CARES two funding for community vaccine event, Jive Benicki.
Um, Mayor and Council, this is a very simple item. We're, it's actually below your threshold of approval of $50,000. Reason we're bringing it to you, though, is it cares funding and for big items, we still want transparency on it. This is 29,000 to work with Latino Community Fund and other not-for-profits in the area for a vaccine and health event, current tentative date, October 23rd.
Move to approve.
Move by Tom.
Second.
Second by Joe. And so this is something that I worked on with our partners. They will be canvassing and the knocking on doors in the apartment complexes to recruit, ask people to come and get their vaccines and the other services available. Um, you know, we did it a few months ago. We did 600 vaccines between Dunwoody and Dorville. It's a lot harder now because so many, you know, it was, then it was easier because you could knock on every door and find people that didn't need a vaccine. So this will be a little more time intensive on the partner's part, but I'm thrilled to be able to offer, for us to be able to offer this opportunity. We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries.
Mayor, moving to discussion items. Item number 18 is award of a contract to CGS LLC retrieval removal on the Winter's Chapel Path, phase one project Todd Meadows is presenting.
Yeah, microphone.
There we go.
Thank you.
Upcoming projects on Winter's Chapel Road, uh, the new multi-use path, phase one requires a tree removal as a part of the initial phase in preparation for the construction project. We recently, back in late August, prepared a bid package and received four bids, actually in, in a fifth, which was presented erroneously or that, that was actually disqualified because it was not submitted in the, in the sealed bid format. Tonight, we're just requesting that, are just presenting the information for your consideration. I think it would go on consent at the following. If there are no objections, the request is for council to approve contract for CGS LLC in the amount of $71,800 for removal of the necessary trees in the right of way on Winter Chapel Road. This is a section between Dunwoody Club and, and Charmont. Near the synagogue, if you're familiar with that area. Believe that's it unless you have.
Uh, questions, Tom?
Um, yeah, um, and Todd, I know Michael's been working on this. I'm not sure how much in loop you are. So I'll allow, figure out which one of you wants to answer the question. Uh, but we heard, we heard Ms. Tiktinsky raise some concerns in the public comments. I presume you guys were tuned in for that. And Michael, I know is well aware of this because we've been shooting back and forth a bunch of emails on this as well. So does the contractor, is the contractor aware? Is there any language that we could put into the contract to ensure that we're not disturbing root zones for trees that are remaining behind? And how, how do we address that?
So for, for, for this specific contract, all we're doing is removing the trees. We'll actually leave the stumps in place. And we've, uh, this allows the utilities to relocate, which is our primary objective at this point. We can address the issue of the protection of root zone with the construction contract, which is, will be a separate contract awarded at a later date. Does that, does that make sense?
Okay, so, so the, the work that'll be done here should not have any impact at all on, on the trees on the other side of the, the privacy fence?
We don't believe so because you, again, we'd be, we typically cut the, the trees three feet up. It allows the contractor the opportunity to pull it up with a, an excavator or push it over with a dozer. And I know, I, I've spoken with, I'm going to say Mrs. T because I always. I've spoken with her as, as well. I'm aware of her concerns. I think typically when we are that close to a fence or another tree, we recommend that they grind stump and they're able to be more, it basically protects. More precise and, and you don't have kind of that pulling a tooth kind of damage you might get from pulling up a stump. So.
That's all for now. Thanks.
Just a comment, Tris Caves really didn't want this job.
Apparently not. Guess he ran out of time or.
So, yeah, my, yeah, my quick question is, that was going to comment on that also. But I guess it's based on pricing because one is, it's probably the 1,000 difference. So I guess they're comparable as far as the quality of whatever we get, that's, was that looked at as well?
We, we obviously looked at their qualifications and they had the equipment in, in place. This particular firm is actually, uh, one of the project managers, owner lives is a city of Dunwoody resident. That didn't go into consideration, but it was, again, another, I guess, fact that we.
So the most important question is how do you justify the 300,000 difference?
Uh, we, well, we, we don't.
So, okay, we're just sort of following up on that. So sometimes we get a score grid, Michael, in our packets that show who opened the bids or, you know, right? We get some more information. Or is this response? I know that with public works, you have to take the lowest bid, but is that not standard, standard? Should we be able to see that, Michael? Or Todd?
See the, the entire list.
No, not, we, we usually get like a matrix that shows, maybe that's not for every project.
Yeah, that, we usually do that on design contracts where we're considering qualifications.
This is just price.
On a bid situation, it's really price and then as long as they meet the minimum qualifications.
And have we used this company before? Okay, and then, so what you're saying, just, I'm sorry, I'll get, I'm going out of order, but it just teed off. So what you're explaining to Tom, I think, is, is that at this point, this company is just taking them down to about three feet. The next contract will include either the stump removal or the grinding. Because you said we asked, and when you say we asked the contractor to grind it, can you require it in the next contract?
We can't. We, we actually have an addendum pending, so we can include that language as a, as a part of it.
It seems like if we're concerned about the fence and the trees on the other side, that we should remove the stumps as carefully as possible. And so grinding, I think, is the least, the least. So go ahead. I mean, I would, I can't exactly tell you what to do, but I would suggest that that's in the contract you bring for us to approve. So. Okay. Right. So technically, we're not supposed to do that under Georgia Open Meetings Act, but because we're not voting on this, maybe right when we finish this conversation, Mr. Meadows, you could answer our questions and then prepare to explain it to us. Or you can actually, Tom is going to ask you that question.
Okay.
Are there any provisions as to how the trees will be removed to make sure they don't fall in the other direction or, or can you explain how that, how that'll be handled?
Sure, so we, we typically don't dictate the, the means and methods of the contractor. The, the industry standard for tree removal. You have a, you have a wide variety of some companies that actually have mechanical arms that reach up and grab and were able to cut them into sections as, you know, 10-foot sections and remove them. Um, and you have others who have climbers who go up and, and top them off, top them out and bring them down with, using ropes and, and, and/or bucket trucks. And again, it's a means and methods. Uh, the prescriptions are, are are as outlined in G, we follow the G dot specification, so we can't tell them they have to use a climber. We just tell them that if they, if anything is damaged, the result of negligence or, or accident that they're responsible for, um, you know, for fixing that, any, any damage that might occur.
What, what types of steps? Are there steps typical to prevent that damage from? Because it's one thing to have, you know, mitigation after the fact, but if, you know, going through that process is, is not pleasant for the person that was impacted by the damages. So is there any way, I guess, what, what, what preventative measures are in place to, to keep it as safe and least destructive as possible?
Just oversight by our, our construction crew will be out there daily to make sure that they're that the climbers are taking precautions, that they're, the ropes, they're roving off properly and, and and again stressing. We can also, we typically have a pre-construction conference with, with the contractor beforehand to ensure that they are safety, safety aware and, and making sure that they're, they know to protect fences and, and private property.
Right. Um, Stacy, Joe, go ahead.
So, um, yeah, Todd, you mentioned the utilities, you said, just kind of clarifying. You said that the utilities could come in later? And then I heard the word of knocking down and bulldozing or whatever. That's where I'm looking at also the checks and balances where they're going to come to us first. If we leave those three-foot stumps, we're the next person in the chain before those are touched and moved and done something to?
We are as in the utility?
You mentioned that this, there's a three-foot stump left. And then I overheard you say something like the utilities can come in and they can bulldoze or knock them down and dig them out. Is, what's the next step? Would it be coming to the city again and we'll have another contract to grind or move or what would happen after that?
So the next step is actually for the utilities to come in. And so there, there are two main utilities. AGL is, is going to be relocating the gas main on the, on the east side of, of Winter's Chapel. And they need to have the trees removed before they. And they need to have the trees removed before they, they actually do their work. So the stumps will still be there when, as they're doing that work. They typically bore and, and pull in the lines there. The stump removal will not happen until later, probably the end of fourth quarter, early first quarter, depending on how the bids come in and, and when council approves that contract for the construction project, which includes grading and shoulder improvements and the trail itself. The storm, storm system.
Right.
Did that answer?
Yeah, thanks. So, yeah, just to clarify then.
Sure.
The stumps are gonna remain. They're not gonna be dug out or taken up. They won't be disturbed. And then the next process, it'll come back to the city for further grinding, et cetera, removal. Okay. Thank you.
John?
Yeah, Joe just touched on my point that I was thinking about. Todd, you mentioned, I think you know this is, you know, a done deal. We're gonna remove the trees or looking forward to doing that, but as far as the tree stumps and the grinding and the protection of that berm, that's the important thing. You mentioned the three-foot, you're gonna leave the trees at three-foot high and the reason was is that you could maybe push them over with a bulldozer or an excavator, excavator. We don't want that. Is there any way in which we can mandate that the trees be cut with little or no stump whatsoever? Because we know we're gonna stump grind. So I don't want, if three-feet trees are there, to me, there's a possibility that they could be pushed over and damage the berm. Is there any way we could require them not to have three-feet trees left, but yet as low as possible so that it's much easier to stump grind later?
We, we can do that. We, again, the bid is right now on the streets. We have not, we just had our pretty big conference last week. We expect, we know we're gonna be issuing an amendment, an addendum.
Right.
So in that, we could also, we could clarify and specify particularly the, the row, that back row. But, but.
I just don't understand the three-feet aspect. If we know we're gonna stump grind, why are we leaving the three-feet? Is there any reason why we shouldn't?
Typically because it's, it's a means and methods thing. The contractor by, by pushing it over is typically able to get more of the root system up.
But we don't want them pushed over.
Right. In this case, in the particular case, it, it's, it's been more a matter in the past of allowing that mean and methods to be on the contractors, at the contractor's discretion. Understanding he would also need to stabilize and, and, you know, restore the site to a compacted state. In this particular case, we could certainly add that language.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just thinking that right now, we are not doing the land grading. That's in the future contract. That's in the future bid. The grinding would be in the future bid. Right now, we're just preparing them to get there. I don't see the reason for the three-feet. I'd prefer it to be as cut as low as possible so that they're not pushed over with an excavator and that's my only recommendation or suggestion. So thank you. This is discussion.
But, but I think there was a little confusion because this contract has been, it's, the bids are in. And in the contract that we're about to vote on, because we don't have it, does it say that they're left at the three-feet?
It does, but it would be very simple to, during, when we have our pre-construction conference with the tree removal company.
Okay.
They'll, they'll just say, hey.
Right.
We'll just say, instead of cutting the three-feet up, we want you to cut it at the, at the base.
So I'm not an engineer, just in case anyone didn't know that. But what I'm wondering about is, we know that the utility work can take eighteen months. I don't know what the plan is for this plan. I actually had a call with Georgia Power a few weeks ago to see if we could change that. That's what the answer was, no. But I'm curious if the, if we cut them down to the ground or closer to the ground, does that cause stabilization issues during the period of the utility work being done? You don't have to answer today because it's, this is coming back to us. But if y'all could take a look at, because what I don't want is unintended questions of like, because the utility work, maybe in this case, Michael, is it still gonna take eighteen months? Todd, do you know?
Take as long, AGL is, actually has a contractor standing by.
Okay. Is it just AGL that we have to move?
That's the primary one that we need in order to do the storm, which is the first phase, first phase in the sequence of operation. Georgia Power is probably gonna be a two-month operation for them to relocate their lines.
Okay.
After which, the Comcast and AT&amp;T have to relocate.
Yeah.
Typically what ends up happening is that the utilities are out there for the duration of the construction. We try to get as much of it underway so that the work, their work ends hopefully, you know, thirty to sixty days before the contractor does and so that they're out of the way of the contractor, but oftentimes, it's, it's, they can be out there for some time during, during construction as well.
Okay. So just before we vote on this, if we can just make sure that, we wanna make sure we don't leave an unstable situation where it washes stuff away. So if y'all could just get back, if you could just get back to us, we won't make this a consent agenda item. It'll be on our regular agenda next time. So that we'll have, we could get these questions answered. So, thank you. Anybody else? Anybody have questions? Nope. Okay. Thank you. Public comments, if anyone would like to make a comment, you can fill out a card. I don't see anybody. So next up is city manager comments, comments.
You didn't have an executive session for personnel?
Yes. Thank you. Council comments? Oh, John?
I heard that the paint recycling went very well and kudos to Richard. Thank you, sir, for being there. And the due diligence that was, members of the community were like, wow, that was, so thank you. So I heard it went very well. Appreciate everything that everybody does.
Joe?
It's a beautiful weekend last weekend. I tell you, the Donaldson Banister, hats off to the Dunwoody Preservation Trust for folks that haven't been there. You know, it's a public park, but they're enjoying it, but they had a dinner under the stars. And it was, you had to be a member first. I hope they do it more often. At a bluegrass band, it was farm-to-table dinner done by Marlowe's. They sold out in minutes because it was a pre-sale, members only. So it was just gorgeous, absolutely lovely amenity. And, and I'll just say, I went for a little casual bike ride, seriously casual, on Sunday afternoon. I went through Brook Run Park and I saw it so activated. Every pavilion, there were people having birthday parties, soccer families. I went over to Purnishaw. There was like, you know, some kind of DJ playing, the courts were packed, people playing volleyball. It's just fun. Then I went over to the Georgetown, the bocce ball. There was a bocce ball club. They play every Sunday afternoon. This women's club playing bocce ball. Again, so what am I just saying is, you know, it's, it's so awesome. It was a great weekend. And, and the little lesson learned is, guess what? That took public dollars in investment in our community to make some of those things happen. And but it's great to see that happening here and it's just, just awesome. So there you go. Thank you. Dunwoody had a great weekend.
Right. Anybody? All right. I need a motion for executive session for personnel.
Moved to executive session for reason of personnel.
Second. Second move by Jim, seconded by Pam. All in favor, say aye. I'm sorry, Stacy, oh my god. Oh my god, sorry. She's gone. That wasn't even nice. Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay. We'll be back. Yes, you can bring your dinner over. Are we going to Georgetown or the city manager's room? Okay. CM.
I'm.
Please song that then song back for person just walk um okay this I wanna and I hope they be very confident and doing what but not on then that song yes now um perfect so they all this they this right but hope that water is getting for us so done here's that ready thank I got your arms need one so just so so be one you're uh uh ask yeah now it sorry I have this is but right um two um two then um two yeah well oh sh right so I never and it is second question but all they call or anything song sorry do they I all they are this sh yes and just change the that song that be up all um work okay yep right yeah and soon they that but right yes yeah oh he down oh that's right this a big this will be just straight up sh um still it's I didn't keep parts we're need uh say um or right that is not uh so that go um of right okay sure up say no no per yes oh sorry probably all both right just it's not something get per person is for right so I don't I don't it's so edge you want all how this you know you were click pop oh just on who stop with yeah uh back check it's up up so that very but uh okay there you go there's this is my third it's all you have better here I know it I blame everything on you I thought my smell was a lot stronger see my yeah up don't let her sparkle out good here stop hmm
Got the awesome background.
Yeah.
Bill, would you say that we've cancelled the October twenty seven report session?
I'm sorry about?
We have cancelled the October twenty seven. Now you need to work harder to build that house.
I am working. I actually would say you had a quick sweep of all hand dishes. I sat down, I paid for the debit, I'm asleep. We got three hours later.
He's two.
Uh, maybe that. George or Saul. It's proper. We should have been there for nine, nine minutes.
Well, I never know twice what's wrong.
How'd you know? What all the extra shit? Six point lead, extra point ago. Yeah. That'll be the first. Good start, I'm sorry. Will. I'm I'm interested in this though. We'll be checked. Yes, I'll make sure. What time is it? Four o'clock. Seven six. Guess I could soon. We got so left, did it all take an hour today?
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes. We got a good. Happy. While we're doing the standard thing, we'll be eating breakfast. Oh. My. Five.
Thank thank my father.
Lost double. You know what I? Very well. Yes, gets gravy. Or barbecue. I'm right here. Like five step post of the child of the guy. I like, I I can't, like, I won't give you the new back. But I didn't ask. Thinking. I'm. It's the. Just. Did it still. It's grand. Alright, let's see, we're. When all the have decided.
Uh. The white name.
This is probably today.
No, no, no. Yeah.
No.
So. You're invited. When you start. We could have four great.
You don't want to come.
Yes, I'm. He's on.
He did, he did seven thirty, you'll be done by eight thirty.
Be today fifteen, so. Thank Jay with us, it'll be done really fast. He believe me?
His main breed are pretty bad.
Yeah. That's right. I. I. See. I. He had. I would borrow this. One one one. What's up? Oh, remember. I think. I can play, I just put their ass up here. Maybe for a month or so. But it's a. Ever rise, you know, appetizer. They would just. If he is at. Oh. Well, twenty four. Have you been there yet?
I am.
You haven't.
Somebody else. He might have. Yeah, I have to check it out.
Uh, Joey B.
Do you know what that wrong?
Oh, it's a.
And that probably, that's a very easy to be on. So I need over. He's from the back store. Can't go. Can't go. Can't go, Phil. Maybe it's always nice atmosphere. Truly decent. Joey D's.
What is?
Uh. He. We. We both have the, uh. Smoke or light. He has. He has a clam chowder. And I. Strip pot.
He's different.
Yeah. He's cheese breaded. Some mashed potatoes. He likes that thin. Thin sort of bread. It's, you know, the stuff. That's kind of a cracker. Yeah, a cracker. Very huge a cracker. You know, like three little balls. He likes salt and butter, and I like my own salt. That cat gives. I call it that. He always think. He has his TV back.
Fair.
Not that I can tell you what we like to eat.
No, not. Yeah.
Whenever you got one session. Don't know. I have like. What is? Okay.
Oh, okay.
I can. I swear. It's not better place to eat. Snickers. Cause they got everything under the sun. Yeah, you can get amber, they even have fried catfish. It's like I just realized that that's probably my favorite place to eat. Or another. Alright. I like grilled catfish. I love grilled cooked. I'm.
You eat that tail?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's. It's just little. Fried. I used. But I worked out. You know. We go eat at the, uh. Taylor County. County bar. Two banks. And, you know, pressure some cook, alright? And we have. We have. Catfish. Out of the blender. Little. You know. White matter. Hard fry. Pull it off. 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 Straight off. Off. And then put it down. Crispy on the back. That. Just like.
Hey, my hat.
But. I tell you, it has that. The other. Big knife.
Uh huh.
Uh. Probably my sister. Right? I think it's service. Players up. All the enemies. Go to court. And then. Sheriff, usually. Something. But. We. On. County bar. Day. Jail. So. Right? And. He's still. He's. He's. Just. They had. Maybe. I'm sitting across the table. A big old table. Table. I'm just cutting that. One up, I'm just going down. I. She's in. Yes. Yes. It's time. But she's. It's like. She. She never had a fourth flight at all. We have died. Ritual, daddy. Never read. Never read the state. He's. Back in the park. But. And, uh. It was. Ah. Hmm. So he's big old guy. He was. He did so good, but included ditch. Included jail. Sheriff just did more than that. He was expected so. And so. And then, you know, what do you think? The same. Uh. Cause we're not making the corporate. That corporate, I think, calls and pees that have got. Because. And he was there for a lot of kids. You know, he. He. He can. Go to the courthouse. Sheriff's office, right? Where else we go sheriff's office? You can't leave. Your friends. He has a bar. He would sit down. Sit in front of me. In front of jail. It's supposed to be hard.
That was actually great. We had. That. Yeah.
Uh. You do that. Only one. Why do you need? She. So. I'm. So. All. We can now. Of course. But. I find it. Don't be. If you work at. Um. Now. My. Um. People. Yeah. But. Um. That's. Ah. That's. I'm. And now. There. This. Those. I think. The first. I would. Well. Um. I would. Keep the D. For. My. He's got a hold on. Same picture. Come. That shit. You got? She's slowly shedding. Cool. I think it grew to twenty-three. That's.
No. If you smoke like so. But I. Feel.
So. Um. You said. Alright. We. Good.
Oh, I.
That was funny. Somewhere else. Uh. Over here. Right. There.
I mean, I have. I have. I don't.
I'm. Choice. Yeah. You can go down Hammond.
Well, so. Not too far.
So. So Hammond, you can jump on down. Did he? Put the slide or bird's fair? Up here.
Well. That's why everybody.
That's true.
I mean.
Except the ones who are gonna drive or announce them.
And I do know how we cheat out really. How good. If you get on Waze, and all of us just say that you're a cop. Whatever. And.
Yeah.
And then not people saying it, people saying, oh, you got wings.
Well, we can give us temporary stoplights. Then put it in. Or.
It'll. Don't be.
Go down. And then not really anything you can do about it.
I guess you will have to work on practice.
Don't ever talk that important. I'm like, everybody will be sitting there.
I know. I know, but it's mindset. Let's keep it thinking. I do. You're gonna be the one twenty-five miles an hour for the next couple of years there.
Yeah.
Hey. Uh.
Now, hold on. We're moving to center lane, right? What lane's gonna approach you then?
Well. Well, it's a typical center lane, which I can't use anyway.
Okay, yeah.
Move by Jim second by time.
Are you gonna stay here or do two? We got four. I'll let him say. Alright.
Four.
Say goodbye, Stacy. No. We got four.
Move to adjourn.
Is that good?
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye. (laughing)